Okay, I just wanted to announce that we have our um community member Auntie Kathy had brought some snacks and refreshments for everyone, so please um over here at the back table help yourself. Um, there's a lot on this agenda, so bear with us and we appreciate all of your attendance tonight. So calling this meeting to order, it is six thirty-two. And we will go right into Pule Veki with Mr. Endo.
Can I have your rice? If you don't know, in my prayer, I'm gonna pray for the stabbing that happened at the elementary school. Um, two eleven-year-old were involved in the classroom. In fact, my grandson was right in the classroom when it happened. Um, and Jonathan is not here because uh he was called to the hospital. I think if a family member, somebody in his family is not doing well. So so family members are uh on their way from Alda Island. So we pray for him and his family. But thank you for the food. I'm just gonna say benefit of coming to. You never know when you might get some nice refreshment, but uh that's great. Well, I I do thank you. I thank you how you you provide for us. I thank you for putting on the heart of someone to bless us. Bless her. For blessing us. And Lord, I I pray for Jonathan and his family at this time. Whatever the emergency is, we ask that you be with them. There needs to be a miraculous healing. May it be in Jesus' name. But may the the family find peace and comfort. And Lord, I pray peace and comfort, healing um for the situation of Makah Elementary School. I pray for both young men. Whatever caused that boy to do what he did, Lord. May he find the help that caused him to act in that way. And be with his family. Imagine what they are going through. But also for the boy that was stabbed. Total healing. Remove the trauma. That he will not have to live with that trauma. But also be with his family and comforting them. Lord, help us in Y-Nine to just be people of love and respect. And Lord, I I pray for all me that once again, your blessing. May we do all things for no to your glory, to your honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Endo. So we're moving right along and we will go to um emergency and first responders. So Hawaii Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, Captain Nishima, Sean Nishima from the Y-Nine Fire Station. Um, I have the statistics for the month of October twenty twenty-three. So there was one structure fire, um three wildland brush fires, three or four, excuse me, four nuisance fires, which include fires outside of structure or vehicle fires. There were zero cooking fires, zero activated alarms. As far as emergencies, we had a hundred seventy-seven medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, three motor vehicle collisions with crashes, uh zero mountain rescues, no ocean rescues, and zero hazmat incidents for October. The fire safety tip has to do with holiday cooking safety. So keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve rank second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on the stove top. Stay in your home when you're cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. If you wanna fry turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oils are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer. That has been listed by a qualified testing laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. That's it for the statistics. Any questions?
Board member Perry, you have a question?
Thank you. You know, when um when outside assistance like from the mainland come in to assist Fire Department, um is the state being billed for that? Our state or outside state? How is how is that um billed? So there's a fire? Go ahead, sir.
I'm assuming you're certain you're um regarding the Melalani Fire when you have the hot shots, is that what it is? Um, that, yeah, that I'm not too sure. I will find, try to find out that information for you. How um I wasn't too sure how the truck contract worked in, worked out with them coming over here. Um, but I will try to get that information for you and uh get that answer by next um neighborhood board.
Do you know the cause, what happened? Cause you know the smoke come over to our side.
There's still no um cause, it's still under investigation. Right now, they said it's ninety ninety percent contained. It's all in remote areas. I think um now it's mostly, there's only like spot fires now in the um the the U.S. Fire and Wildlife Services area. So I think the command is gonna be transferred over to them, cause it's um more in their area now. So um but they said it's ninety percent contained and it's not threatening any structures or anything right now, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Anybody in the room have questions for Honolulu Fire Department or other board members? Yeah, and then we're gonna go right to Uncle Austin Sosido. Mr. Sosido, you can go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Uh Sean, aloha, Sean. This uh this past uh Makah Bridge closure, uh you folks did well, including burning out, peeling out that uh vehicle fire, I would say a truck fire on the beach side across Kail Homestead Road, right across Lady of Kail's on the ocean side. So this upcoming uh bridge closure targeted for, I think it was November sixteen or seventeen. I'm concerned about again of the illegal campers that's out there again. Uh, for for some reason, they have a tendency of burning things. And I wanna, I wanna make sure that you folks can, you know, assess these problems again, they were maybe encountering in that area because of the bra, heavy brush dry land in that area. That's my question.
Um, so so you're asking about uh, is it access or?
What's happening is uh everything's gonna, all the vehicle traffic is gonna go up Makaha Valley Road, come down through Kili Kili Drive. So you'd be losing like about, gee, almost fifteen minutes of uh or ten minutes of commute time just making those detours. And to respond to a fire like a uh truck fire like that in that area will be catastrophic, you know, especially right now with the winds and uh the dry grass brush line at Kail area. So I'm concerned about all those illegal campers that's out there. And like I said, they have a tendency of burning things.
Yeah, so um right now, because the access is open, I understand it's a it's a longer response time for for you, oh, for us, sorry. Um, uh, right now, we don't have any um. I'm trying to, trying to think of the the question. Um. Uh, we can have our inspectors kind of go over there and take, take a look and assess, assess the risk. Um, as far as uh it should be open for us to kind of get there. Um, not too sure what, if we can do anything as in far as enforcement to push people out. But um, is there is there like um a lot of brush that's a concern that we have to um maybe help clear that you're concerned about?
Uh, well, I think more like uh if they, illegal campers out there that's going, opening, putting out the open fires in there, I'll be, that'll be a concern right now. Major concern, you know? And I don't think there'll be, I don't think DPR, City DPR is gonna close out the camping during that era. So maybe we're gonna have to ask the city as well, too, if they're gonna shut down camping at Kail Beach Park area, you know.
Just for the longer response time.
Yeah, because of the delaying the response time. So maybe that'll be an option as well, too.
Yeah, um, we'll see what they, what um they have as plan. If if we are gonna have more um units, maybe a little bit closer by.
They'll be helpful. They'll be very helpful.
Yeah, I'll I'll pass it up to um our command and see uh the response for that, if they actually want us, if they're gonna move more resources. Probably it's gonna be more for if there are those red flag warning days, then that's gonna probably be the more the concern of actually having more resources out there earlier. Um, if there isn't maybe that concern right now, they might still kind of just do it a regular staffing, but I'll go ask.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you so much for attending and for your reports. If we can, please get that um via email. I believe if chair already forwarded it, then then this regard, but thank you so much. Um, and then moving right on to Honolulu Police Department, I see Sergeant Fumi.
Aloha, board and community members. Sergeant Fumi, Moro Kule, District Eight of Community Policing. I have this uh crime stats for the month of October. Uh, Y-Nine had five motor vehicle thefts, uh twenty-six in our district, uh six burglaries in Y-Nine, twenty-one in the district. Uh, Y-Nine had thirty-seven thefts reported. Uh, total in the district was one thirty-nine. Uh, unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, Y-Nine had five and sixteen in the district. Uh, force speeding tags issued, hundred twenty-one miscellaneous moving violations, forty-one parking violations. Total citations was hundred sixty-six. Uh, total calls for service, uh six thousand four hundred twenty-one in our district. Uh, Y-Nine had one thousand nine hundred fifty-three. Um, Mr. Salsedo had a question about uh the robbery in uh, I believe it was Lejoku Street or at the bus stop. Oh, I'm sorry, Water Street, yeah, I'm still looking that up. Uh, if I can answer that, uh after the report, I'll put that on the chat, uh the chat. But uh, I'll take any questions right now from the board or from the community.
So I have two online. If anybody has questions, please make your way to the microphone and then board members let me know if you have any questions. So Johnny May, Board Member Perry.
Uh, is there any kind of program at HPD that reaches out to the public school to help um combat, to educate on crime or to become better law-abiding citizens? Is there such a program at HPD?
Uh, so we've, uh, Community Policing has been doing a lot of uh uh presentations. Uh, so far, we've been doing a lot of cyberbullying and uh just bullying in general, as well as vaping. There's been a lot of vaping uh concerns at the schools from elementary all the way to high school. So we've been doing a lot of presentations. Uh, anybody that wants to uh have a presentation done, honolulupd.org, they can uh go online and request that and we'll work with them to uh find a date and time to do the presentation. So um.
So how many of that is in the nine-six-seven-nine-two district?
Uh, I don't have the count right now, but we've been going uh throughout our district at all the schools, different schools uh throughout our district, uh from Y-Nine to Ever Beach.
Can you get back to us in January with what schools are um taking that opportunity to hear HPD on those those topics? Thank you.
I'll do that. Thank you, Johnny May, for the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then we're going to Board Member Vehilani.
Aloha, Sergeant. Thank you for coming tonight. Um, my my question, in your report, you had the five break-ins or the five auto thefts. Do you know, was it all in the same area or was different areas? And then um what kind of vehicles were were targeted?
Uh, I can look that up, but I'd have to report that on the next uh board meeting. Uh, it's throughout Y-Nine. Uh, I don't have the specific info offhand, but I can find out.
Okay, this was one, it was Honda's, cause I just got one Honda two thousand ten. I don't know if those buggers like take them, but anyway, um, thank you, Sergeant. Yeah, yes, I see you. Happy New Year. See you in the new year.
Yeah, thank you for the question and um I'll get back to you on that at the next board meeting, either myself or Corporal Payan or bring that info.
Thank you, Sergeant Fumi. Appreciate you guys. Aloha.
And before we move on to the next agenda item, I don't see any other hands. But um I just wanna say thank you to Honolulu Fire Department and Honolulu Police Department for your continued service to us and our community. Um, and getting back to us with our concerns and also um just answering the call. Uh, there's lots of testaments, you know, in this last month and a half that you guys um just, we, I just wanna say mahalo. Uh, I know before you guys go, there's a community member that wanted to just recognize Fire Inspector and the the things that Honolulu Police Department collaboratively, you guys helped resolve an issue in the community. And I just don't know if you guys are still gonna be on when it comes to community concerns. So just know that you guys are greatly appreciated and stay safe out there. God bless. Aloha. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your support.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so moving on to agenda item number four. Um, this is for board. Um, so we are, we don't have one board member, so are we gonna continue with the vote on this or? Okay, I just wanna make sure that you're, yeah, okay. Okay, so.
Kallee's hand is up. Online.
Okay. Um, and Auntie Clay, you can go ahead. Is it a question to HPD?
Yeah, my hand is up.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you, you're good. Go ahead.
But she's talking, right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanna thank you, Sergeant Fumi and HPD for being there when a bridge closures. I uh really appreciate the collaboration you folks had with the, on the job and um with uh Travis Dem. You know, it was a job uh well done and in protecting my uh, you know, the kopunas along uh Kail side, Makau Street side. So I really appreciate you folks in the collaboration and that continues to mean uh the diligent duties we can for protecting the kopunas and you folks know me. I know all about my kopunas and children's safety. So I thank HPD for taking that extra step and Travis Dem, all duty police officers who really kept my kopunas and the residents out was the Kail side safe. Without you folks collaborating, I don't think we would have been that safe. It would have been packed it out there. But they knew it was not a, you know, cat and mouse game. It meant business. So thank you, folks, for collaborating with each other and the construction worker. Thank you, mahalo Travis, for all the work and uh everyone who put the helping hands into it. Mahalo to all. That's all.
Mahalo, Auntie Clay. Okay, so moving on to agenda item. Anyways, if HPD or HFD has to go, we mahalo you guys and aloha you. Um, thank you very much for your attendance this evening. Um, any more questions? I don't see anybody online, so. Um. Agenda item number four, consideration of adding the removal of officer, officers to the Y-Nine Coast Neighborhood Board number twenty-four on to the January agenda. And we move for discussion or move to discussion?
Make a motion.
Motion, actually. Motion.
I will make a motion to put it on the January twenty twenty-four agenda.
Uh, so, okay. Was that cross crab that seconded it? Or was that?
Vehilani.
Vehilani, okay. Uh, so we have Johnny May making the motion and Vehilani seconding the motion. So we will be adding that vote to the January agenda. Uh, and we are going for a vote. Are you gonna do wrong call?
Test, test, my good?
Wait, I have a question before we um. So Tiana was, um, is to put it on the agenda for discussion, right? Or is it to put it on this, put it on agenda to vote for it?
Um, so the discussion would be right now, but we're, we're discussing it and voting to put it on the January agenda to go for the vote.
Okay, all right.
And just to be clear, we're not removing anyone from the board as we don't have the authority to do that as board members. We are just removing the position of officer.
And that's all we know.
Yeah.
Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Lanford.
I have a question.
Yes.
So we, we removing the officers permanently or 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 just some adjustments or clarification is what I'm asking for?
Um, so this agenda item was reworded in differently from what the actual request was. And it was for removal of officer as the chair of our neighborhood board. And we could have either gone to vote for another chair or we can leave it without a chair. Um, but this is what was put onto the agenda is the consideration of adding the removal of officers or officer to the Y-Nine Coast Neighborhood Board Agenda January.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can only give you as much clarification as I have, as I didn't put this agenda together. So um, that's the best clarification I can give. Um, unless we wanna state a different motion and be very specific and what do we wanna see moving forward? Um, that's but currently the motion is on the floor.
Um, Tiana, if I may.
Go ahead for a vote.
With, in regards to what you had just said, um, I recommend taking, like, as the motion stands with the items on the agenda, to have it considered for January's agenda, just to make sure that, ensure that is placed on that agenda.
Right, so we're just going for the vote that we will be voting on this in January? Yes. So if that, hopefully that clarifies our questions. Yes, go ahead, um, Mrs. Perry.
Okay, so my understanding is to put it on the January twenty twenty-four agenda and take action. It's not, it is just an officer to step down. It doesn't mean to remove from the board. All of us have two years on the board. If one chooses to leave, that's their option and prerogative to do. But in this case, it's just strictly um removing an officer from their current position. And and that's what we're doing here. Thank you.
Yes. So any more clarifications? Are we going for the vote? We're calling for the question.
Okay, so the current motion on the floor is for the consideration of adding the removal of officer, officers to the Y-Nine Coast Neighborhood Board number twenty-four for the January uh twenty twenty-four agenda. Uh, if you're online again, please unmute yourself just for um the vote purpose. Um, member Crab?
Aye.
Endo? Got him on? One more time? Thank you. Lanford? Perry?
It's to take action. There's no consideration already. It's to take action. Aye.
Uh, member Perry, this is just the consideration to add it on to the board. This, if the vote is passed, this will be added to the board for, to the board agenda for January twenty twenty-four.
Aye.
Vehilani?
Aye.
Clay Wilbur? And Tiana Wilbur?
Aye.
Okay, so the vote is passed with a vote of seven ayes, one nays, zero abstentions.
Okay, thank you. So we're moving right along. Um, so to agenda item number five, and we are going right into community concerns. So if if we can have, um, if you have community concerns or wanna address anything, you would line up at the microphone. Um, and then if you have any concerns or questions online, you would raise your hand. And we're going to try to do um a back and forth like ping pong, uh in person, online, in person, online. And we also have a timer here. It will be green and as your time uh depreciates, it's gonna go or gets lower, it's gonna go to yellow and then it'll turn red. Um, this is just to try and help keep our time uh because we do have a long agenda tonight. So thank you, if you can state your name for the record and then.
It's on? Uh, yes, Susan Gorman Chang. Um, I am from the Shut Down Red Hill Coalition and I'm excited to be here. We have thirty-one of the thirty-three neighborhood boards having signed a resolution to shut down Red Hill and permanently decommission it and um for remediation. And so it's still a relevant issue. I know you all have a copy of the resolution and I hope you will be voting on it tonight. Um, like I said, it's still relevant, even though they're defueling, that's kind of like this much of what needs to occur. We need to have that shut down permanently because it's a threat to our aquifer. So uh mahalo.
Mahalo, Susan. Um, so really quickly, there is an updated um agenda online. So you have a slot in presentation. So if Rebecca wants to finish off, she can in that presentation. Um, any other community concerns or items we'd like to address? I'm, I'll go mic real quick. I'm just gonna go to Board Member Perry. You can go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm just making two announcements since the announcement is not here. Um, the Y-Nine um Community Sustainable Plan Meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty at Y-Nine L. And I'd like to um also recognize planning fitness. I think there's a good business in Y-Nine. Thank you.
Mahalo. Um, okay, coming in person, state your name for the record.
Michael Willem Capolino Eli. Um, so I was still wondering, they stayed there. The ones up the ranch and they said they're secreting, they still drilling. Um, augering and working the excavator on top historic preservation of Y-Nine Valley. A guy is uh statin and he get that oligary raving or whatever. With the horses and stuff. And they share dual leases with Eric Inos, home Alkeola. And Eric Inos, they get uh dual leases, they both leasing fourteen hundred acres. So I like know. I mean, game one is probably gave him a citation, but I think them guys get out of there already. The guy is statin and they're secreting too much, they're disturbing the EV in the ground. If there's historic preservation, what you doing drilling and mining? You can pound pigs in the ground, but you cannot drill and put telephone poles in the ground. Over there get claws all over there on historic preservation. They cannot undermine the, the earth. So that's what they're doing. And then on the other side of Ingris Junkyard, that's part of the ranch, but they guys didn't sell them to the realtors and sell that, that land on that side, but they still secreting over there too because they get walls, get walls that our Kupunas didn't build. But now they running them all over. They running them all over and I don't know what the dealing are doing. Because the dealing like if I can see this, how come they cannot see them? Now, if I was on dealing, I, you know how fast I would go over there and tell them, oh brother, where your grading license? I see your paperwork. If they're not giving it right there, giving them citations already. I giving them right there. So they gotta start stepping up their, their job because I can see they're not truck all day, AC and not doing shit. S, you know what I mean? They, they guys not doing their job. Because if I can see them and I go up the valley and I see desecration, that's you guys' job. Historic preservation, they gotta do their job, that's all they gotta do. And then um, where else, YNIC Valley? That? And then over there? They get on their own PVC going on uh. Uh, I cannot say, Uncle, Uncle, you guys, um, what is your name? Your sister? They guys dumping rubbish and they burying them, man, they must not do that kind of stuff over there too, get claws. Uncle Lanford, they get claws over there too, they must not be um like making like uh PVC landfill, they dumping asphalt and um cement and then they burying them.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, aloha.
Sorry, our timer went off. Um, but yes, I appreciate your mana'o on that.
Chair, can I respond slightly on, on the issue that uh is just uh for clarification on board?
So I will let you just normally, community concerns, we want, we don't have any discussion, but go ahead, you can.
Anyway, I know you're calling me out over there Eli, then that's the only reason. But there is Yvonne, and I haven't met Yvonne, but Yvonne has the pola pola, she has the paperwork for that property. So when the incident was occurring last week, my sister called me for take, take her up there, go, go look for Yvonne. Because Yvonne and her family has the pola pola for those properties up there. But um, we couldn't get her, we got her on the phone, but she was nowhere in the area. So, somebody's working on it, okay? But like the government, it takes a little while. Okay, my brother, take care, that's all, it's just FYI, that's all I know.
So, so Mr. Fuller. His grandfather was the church, okay? He was the pastor that founded the church over there. So he had forty acres, so you guys get half and he get half. Or your sister, Yvonne or well Harris get out of half. I just figured tell you because he the, the heir and successor.
Guys, sorry, so that's a little bit more personal stuff and we gotta definitely discuss those things offline, but I appreciate you guys mana'o.
Oh.
Um.
Chair, this is um board member Crab. Um, I have like a very tiny update, like, like very tiny.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just want to say, Mr. Eli, um, there is a investigation for DLR happening. Um, but yeah, offline, um, I can provide the update, thank you.
Please, thank you so much. Um, and then yes, yes, you can, you can go ahead. Uh, and then I think I see three hands up online. So I'm gonna um, we have one in person and then we'll move back online.
Hi, I'm Kathy Zaha, I've been coming to the meeting since May of this year. And I really, really appreciate the board for the work that you guys have been doing. And for the first time, I've really found out what the board can do. Um, I had a problem with a homeless guy living across the street from us. And I worked for two years without any, any accomplishment of any kind. I went to every lawmaker that I could go to and I never got the help that I got. From fire inspector, Gordon Parker. He is really, really an awesome guy and I see that as a being, you know, in the right place at the right time. And when I spoke with him because of his fire concerns in Lahaina, he was concerned about the same situation happening here in Makahaha and YNIC. I knew at the time that uh he was the right person for me to go to. And I'll be very honest, two days after the board meeting that I spoke with him, he called me back. And that was the quickest response I ever got from an official. And within, actually within less than two months, I was able to take care of the problem. So I really thank the board. And um I have two other people here, actually three, that I want to recognize today. Because the volunteer help that they provided for us after the homeless person left, you should have seen how big a mess he had left. And so today I want to recognize Dory and her grandson, would you both come up here please? Also, Tiana, I would like to recognize you too because you are the one member of the board that really helped me out. You gave me advice, you told me what to do, what not to do, and I really, you know, don't know what I would have done without you. So can I give you a lay? Um, what I want to um focus right now is thank you to Dory and her grandson. We were able to take care of the trash that was left by one homeless person. And I believe, Dory, you made ten. Yeah, she made, yeah, she made nine to ten trips uh in the four days that she helped us. And also Tiana's family, we did the same thing. So I really, really want to thank you all for helping out with the cleanup of the mess that was left by this one guy. You imagine about nine to ten, you know, ten loads of trash that's that one person left, it was ridiculous. It really was. And, and, and then we uh, we did permanently, I think anyway, uh, we feel he permanently left that area. And so we're very thankful for that.
Thank you, Antika. I mean, first for bringing your concerns and giving us the opportunity to serve our community in that way. So thank you for being here and, and participating. Um, that's definitely what we want to see moving forward is how can our community come together and move ourselves in a positive um motion forward, so.
Right.
So mahalo for the opportunity.
And also Xander also uh, you know, volunteered this help. He was looking for credit for school. And it gave him a real good opportunity to become part of the group here. But most of all, I want to thank the board itself because it was really a big help. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in appreciation for
Sorry, online.
Your help, Xander. And to Dory. Um, we have a certificate of recognition on behalf of the YNIC Coast Neighborhood Board number twenty-four. This certificate serves as recognition of his outstanding, of his and her outstanding community service over twenty hours that has been invested into our moku in different ways. Recycling cardboard, being of service to Kapuna throughout the coast, hauling rubbish and debris from property or surrounding properties and beach cleanups. These actions have made significant and positive impact to the Leeward Coast. Tiana Wilbur, Vice Chair, YNIC Coast Neighborhood Board twenty-four. Thank you.
Okay, anyways, moving on, so we have uh Roger, you have a community concern?
Yeah, good evening, Board, uh Roger Babcock, Director of Department of Environmental Services. Um, I just wanted to uh let you folks know that I'm here, there's at least one presentation, I think, related to refuse and solid waste. This evening, um, we do take care of wastewater and refuse, including collection, convenience centers, H Power, Wyman Alagulch and uh citing the new landfill. Um, so I'd be here if you have any questions later uh on any of those subjects. Thanks.
Thank you, um, yes, I believe you are oh, you're not on, but okay, we have a presentation relating, yes. Um, so I see anybody else on in person with a concern, uh, Mr. Salcedo?
Aloha, uh, thank you Roger for appearing tonight as well because you're a very informative fellow. Um, anyway, I want to present this uh, on November first, my wife and I had gone to the City Hall, Honolulu City Hall to uh provide testimony on Bill fifty-six. That's regarding the commercial property assessed Clean Energy Financing Program. Uh, this program, uh financing program will assist not only uh uh solar systems and energy efficiency, but somehow it includes Se- Seppu conversions as well too. But uh, so we testify in support of all other languages in here. But to delete any languages regarding wastewater sewage and connection to the city sewer, we oppose that. For the reason is, is because the state legislation has done that from the early this year on the waste, uh, on the Seppu conversion working team consisting of sixteen individuals. And including this, including Director Roger Babcock himself as part of this conversion team. But uh what our concerns is, is this is a duplication of what's happening and this financing program is basically making a landowner accountable for any type of financing, fully accountable, hundred percent. But with the interest rate is unknown yet, we'll be coming up with a meeting with uh our councilwoman regarding this thing with, with the loan officer. But this loan officer is actually from the state, state official. And the state official is not part of the Seppu conversion working team. So that's uh, that was one of the concerns as well too, because you'll be having duplication on this thing. But most important, most importantly, I brought it to the Chair Tommy Waters, attention to him because of Bill seven made in twenty uh twenty nineteen, ordinance twenty dash thirty-six, that has to be repealed. So a bill needs to come on one of our city representatives to uh repeal and set up, set up a bill to squash this Bill seven twenty, ordinance twenty dash thirty-six. Because even though you, a homeowner upgrades from a Seppu to a septic well along down the line, a sewage city sewage system comes along the line and they are required to hook up. And the reason why more so on this Bill seven, back in March of twenty nineteen, they did not allow illegally allow for public testimony to be heard, they cancel public testimony, that's totally illegal. So with that said alone, public community had no way of knowing about this Bill seven because we had no testimony provide any kind of input on this. So that's my concern, that's one of the issues in this. So this Bill seven has to be squashed. So it has to be coming out of a bill to have this thing looked at by full sitting council and our position on this to have it expunged. Because it did not provide fair testimony by the public. And secondly, uh, on the state side.
Uncle, we're wrapping it up.
Okay, we had a meeting, we need a follow-up meeting with our homeless committee. And that's by Cross Crab and uh Phil Gonnabon. Uh, because the state is impacting, their programs is impacting our city in our, the landowners on our side. Because their businesses, operations of uh transitional from jail, jail uh diversion programs and all that. They have no city conditional use permits or arch permits that's up, that's performing, performing operations in our community. And they're not bringing it forward to the Neighborhood Board for consideration for tel- for testimony of uh opposition or support on this thing. So with that said, we need a follow-up on the October sixteenth meeting that we had just recently with Congresswoman Gil Takuta and other city and state officials as well too. So
Okay.
We need to follow up on that for our committee, homeless committee. That's very imperative, important, that's all I have.
Mahalo, yes, they are both here and, and is taking that into consideration. And we also have um councilwoman um that chatted in the chat that she's looking forward to working with you regarding um your first statement. So if you guys can connect um offline via the board and then also councilwoman. And then I have one in person, can you please just state your name for the record?
Your Highness, Harris Malohia Fuller Junior. I get a lot of concerns, same concerns that everybody has. But I want an appointment with the legislature next session. Get my recognition, merits, so can start doing something, action. Not just talk, yeah? So my concern. That's that's what I need, my appointment, yeah, the legislature. So that I want.
Okay, we will definitely connect offline so we can see how we can move that forward in, in putting you in the right um contact. Um, any other concerns though?
So.
You actually have more time, or you, if you have anything else?
With, with Pilioka too, you know, all those poahuas, I don't know what they're making up there, but
Right.
They are really mining up there. Really mining and I don't know where they're going with that. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
I just concerned about that.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And who gave them permission, allow them to do all of that?
Right.
You know?
If you have addresses, um, if we could just ask for you to write it on those, those concern sheets so that we can further look into um the specific areas that you. Thank you, we appreciate that mana'o. Thank you. Um, and then online, Antikale?
Aloha. Actually I have a concern. And this concern is to inform all of you folks, including our board members. You know YNIC is an ATM machine for this type of businesses. Uh, ATM machines, you guys know, with a city nonprofit organization business, state businesses of mental health, drug rehab. Our district is an ATM machine and it should not be allowed that way. And the reason I'm saying that is compromising safety and well-being of our children and my Kupunas. We ought to be focusing on safety issues. It seems like these violators that's in this type of facility, businesses, that's non-business at times. That's, they even subcontract, when they get the business, they subcontract, which is a violation of their contract if they're under a state or city businesses. But they like to subcontract these businesses, that's one of the thing, you know? That's one of the things, you know? That's a big concern. So we cannot be closing our eyes and think everything's going to be okay and go away. We need to hold our lawmakers accountable. We are just sitting back, letting these things go, and watching our own people or kids killing each other. Where is the lawmakers? Or kids who've been bullied at school? That all needs to be addressed. You know, you got a lot of violators out there that's causing unethical behaviors, too. But we have to hold our lawmakers and our city councils. The businesses or CPRs that's opening, they's gotta start stepping up their game. And not only worrying about what's behind their pocket. Waimea is not an ATM machine. And that's what it is, it's turning out to be. A nonprofit ATM machine, and that's unacceptable.
Mahalo.
We need to start taking our community back for the safety of the community, for the safety of our children, to get the boat harbor. It went wackadoodoo. No control. All perks. Wackadoodoo, no control. Edging and abetting violators that's violating that is law, marked it all over, signed. Government signed all over. No trespassing, no violating, no doing this. And it's still going through. And you guys cannot just say, oh, HPD gotta do it. If they're shot-handed, a lawmaker should turn around and fill in the gap. And start always turning around blaming HPD. Do something, you're the lawmakers. Half of it is your folks' law. And this is not an ATM machine. It's time to shut down the ATM machine for the whole 96792. We are not an ATM machine for nonprofit organizations. That's all I have to say, think about it.
Mahalo. Anybody in person with community concerns? So, Koko Hu, are you, are you available?
Yes.
Can I just hand the gavel to you real quick as I present these certificates before we move on? Please?
Okay.
Mahalo.
Sorry, you guys can't really see me, I'm in my car. I'm not driving, but I'm in my car.
Tiana, the gavel goes to Mr. Endo. Gavel go, Endo. Wahilani is the officer.
Wahilani is the second Vice Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Okay, so I'm going to do two certificates tonight. One person of the community was unable to be in person, but I will be meeting him in the morning. So the first person I would like to recognize is Uncle John Naputi Travis. And so Waimea Neighborhood Board Number 24 hereby presents this certificate, commending John Naputi Travis for his dedication, dedicated and devoted contributions to our community. Whereas our community raises much concern on physical safety, protection of our homes during numerous projects, commitment to many organizations to positively grow and improve our community for a stronger Waimea. And whereas there has been a great need for positive mentorship, dedicated, devoted, and invested community members to fulfill and serve in these different capacities to effect the change we would like to see. And whereas John Naputi Travis has selfless dedication to various projects and the safety and well-being of our Moku, still upholding his most important roles as a husband, father, and grandfather to his beloved Ohana. And whereas John Naputi Travis is an active and engaged member of our Moku, such as Waimea Kupuna Council, Waimea Neighborhood Board, countless hours for the safety of our streets with our neighborhood security watch, he is indubitably a positive influence and role model to all being an exemplary model citizen. And whereas John Naputi Travis's actions and devotion always guided with a servant's heart, he immensely blesses our Moku with his presence in our streets, keeping us safe and collaborating closely with our Honolulu Police Department to ensure the safety and well-being of our fellow neighbors. And whereas John Naputi Travis's determination and dedication is the example for all members of our Moku to serve selflessly, taking action in our own capacities positively, utilizing our resources and building a stronger Moku, now and therefore, be it resolved by the Waimea Coast Neighborhood Board Number 24, 2023, that this body commends John Naputi Travis, an outstanding model citizen and mentor of our Moku. Blessings always upon him and his Ohana for their continued investment to our people of our Moku. Waimea Coast Neighborhood Board. So I did get permission, please, to read this. Sorry, I'm gonna try to hold it together as well. So Waimea Neighborhood Board Number 24 hereby presents this certificate commending Kumubuch Detroit for his outstanding years of investment in our Moku and the knowledge imparted to generations and counting. Whereas Manao passed on from Kupuna to Keiki is such a vital principle on the success of our Keiki, as the elders in the community that convey the Na'au'au to preserve our Hawaiian culture and values. Whereas cultural practices and acts of aloha is the traditions that we as a people is recognized for worldwide. As we know, as we now pass on and carry out what we have learned through the years, invested in us as Keiki, we now carry the torch to pass on that Manao to the next generation and visitors that come to have the same respect and aloha. And whereas Kumubuch Detroit has incalculable impacts on our Keiki for generations, as we would have Kumubuch Detroit teaching us our foundations and cultural practices at Ka'ala. His heart was always full of joy as he taught each child the history of Holoa, the process to grow and nourish our most essential source, the respect and protocols of Lo'i and Aina. Pu ike kalau, ku iku imai. Whereas Kumubuch Detroit's awe-inspiring spirit and love for culture and Ohana has inspired and impacted so many lives emphatically through his altruistic nature. He has devoted his life to our culture, our people, and generations to come. And whereas Kumubuch Detroit's legacy will continue to influence many more people in the future, ensuring that our Hawaiian culture and values remain a vibrant and integral part of our Moku. Kumubuch's work is a testament to the enduring spirit of aloha and the importance of passing on these traditions to the next generations. And whereas we as a Moku have large shoes to fill with all Kumubuch Detroit continues to impart into our spirits, we now must continue his legacy and educate our Keiki now and for generations. We are humbled and grateful to not only carry his Manao, but all the many memories created and many more we'll create with him. Be it resolved by the Waimea Coast Neighborhood Board Number 24, 2023, that this body extols Kumubuch Detroit as a meritorious mentor to us all. Blessings upon you always and many more years to come, Waimea Coast Neighborhood Board Number 24. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Nui, Tiana. Before I give the gavel back to Tiana, I just want to reiterate, for those who don't know Uncle Butch Detroit, he's the caretaker of Kahua, Ka'ala Farms for years. Briefly his story, I call him my blue-eyed Kanaka. I have a very intimate relationship with Uncle Butch. I'm with him mostly every Sunday. Uncle Butch's story, he came here from Wisconsin via New York after Vietnam War. He came in early 70s, and he was at Alamana Shopping Center. And had two Kanakas was from Waimea that he went talk story with, and he told him, no go to Waimea. Next time he came, he came to Waimea. And he saw the two Kanakas and he told him, hey, we told you not to come over here. But because of his spirit and because of his Olo'au and aloha, you know, didn't accept him. And he later was hanging down at Kau's, was actually staying down at Kau Beach. And he met his wife. For those in, for those in a surfing, he met Auntie Pua Mukualu, and they married. And Auntie Pua was like, to me, she was like the epitome of our Kanaka superwoman, Wonder Woman. But Uncle Butch, and thank you, Tiana, for recognizing Uncle Butch, because he's getting up there and, you know, he has some good days and bad days. But if you guys don't know Uncle Butch, come with me Sundays, come up calling, come meet this beautiful man. So mahalo, Nui, Tiana, for recognizing Uncle Butch. Love that, man. Thank you, Tiana, and I give you back the gavel. Aloha.
Mahalo. Okay, so I just, a quick statement. Everybody that serves wholeheartedly in our Moku, you guys are greatly appreciated. And we recognize you and we just appreciate all that you guys do in our community. And I'd just rather recognize and celebrate the people while we have them here with us, because they need to know how much they are loved and appreciated for all the work that they do. Because I don't know if you guys know, but sometimes this can be heavy burden to be carrying a lot of, a lot of things and solutions, you know? Even legislators, elected officials, right, there's just a lot. But when you have that servant's heart and you continue to serve, just remember that you have us behind you. So mahalo to all of you that serve, we appreciate you guys. So we're moving on to presentations, and again, oh, go ahead.
I have to motion the change to the agenda to add in a presenter that wasn't able to make it in last month because of our delayed time. For Rachel Ojoki or Okoji, is she out there? Either online or in...
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Sumner, and I'm going to be presenting for Rachel Okoji.
Okay, perfect, so we need to, I move to motion to add or modify this presentation to be added in. In the presentation. Thank you.
So a motion made to add a presentation into the agenda.
It's a special use permit for the construction on a beach, what known as Turtle Beach for us in Makaha, right across the Jade Street.
Okay, and it was seconded by Board Member Wahilani?
Just to clarify, this is something that you guys are adding to the agenda?
Yeah. She was on last month. But, and wasn't made, wasn't put, like transferred over to this month.
Okay, so we'll go and do the vote for that, then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, for the board members that are online, we're going to take a vote for the motion to add a presentation to the agenda, one that was on the prior month's agenda. But due to, you two not being able to attend, it wasn't able to be made. So once again, those online, please, call when your name is called, please. Member Crab?
Aye.
Endo? Gunaban? Lanford? Perry?
Aye.
Wahilani?
Aye.
Play Wilbur? And Tiana Wilber?
Aye.
All right, the motion is passed with eight ayes, zero dais, and zero presentations.
Mahalo, so that would be seen as 6.6. So after 6.5 presentation. So again, before we go into presentations, we are only going to allot five minutes per presenter. And if we can, please, keep questions in that five minutes as well, as we do have a lengthy agenda. So we just want to make sure we can get through the agenda this evening. So we're trying to stay within five minutes for each presenter. So the first, and if we can, if you guys can leave contact information, whoever's presenting, so that if we have further questions, that these individuals can reach out to you offline as well. So our first presenter is Dr. Tanjoma.
Well, I've been here before, so you probably all tired of hearing about from me. But I'm going to have two things to talk about. One is I usually talk about science, because I'm a doctor. But today, I'm not going to talk about science, I'm going to talk about non-science. Secondly, you're probably wondering what that baby is doing down there in the kiddie pool. I'm going to talk about that second. And, and so the first part is what I'm trying to say is, I would ask the audience to ask me the three burning questions that you want me to answer. But I don't think we got time for that. So I'm going to get straight on, is I ask the questions that people maybe don't ask or don't consider. And the first one is, is what are you going to do, yeah? When the radiation levels coming from Fukushima is becoming detectable? Do you think the tourists are going to hear about that? How long is it going to take for the tourists to start cancelling their Hawaiian vacation? And then on top of that, how long is it going to take to affect your jobs? And then after your jobs go south, how long is it going to take for your property values to go south, too? Think about that. I think about the long term, because it's not going to affect any of us in this generation. It's going to affect grandchildren, grandchildren generation, and we don't know exactly, because the Japanese government is totally uncooperative in giving our scientists, oceanographers, the raw data from that Fukushima meltdown decontaminating plant. They're avoiding it like the plague, because were they to cooperate, it would be them giving their DNA sample to the prosecutor. So the idea is, is I want people to think ahead for your great-great-great-grandchildren, because they're going to be asking questions. You're going to be dead, but they're going to be asking a question. Yeah, I thought great-great-great-grandpa used to live in a place Hawaii. Because maybe some people are going to be, like, become like Micronesians and move to the mainland, because they choose to not deal with cancer. I don't going to talk about cancer, because everybody knows and been exposed to cancer devastating ways. But that's what you got to look forward to for your great-great-great-great-grandchildren. Okay, you think about that, think about what the tourist is going to do. How the state or anybody in this state is going to do a PR job to convince them, then it's no problem. Okay, I'm going to switch to baby over there now. So you're wondering what the heck all this baby is here for? Baby is sitting at the beach or in the Tairol Pool. The water is not blue. The water is being fed radioactive material from Fukushima, Japan. And again, I'm not talking as a science, but who in their right mind would expose anybody, especially their kids, grandkids? How long you going to keep them in the Pacific Ocean with that threat? Because cancer is really scary, because you don't know who, you don't know when. But by the time you get, you know, you get informed, it's too late. So you handing that down to your posterity. You don't stop the guys from dumping that in. That's what all our future generations are going to have to deal with. And it's not a very pretty picture, that's what I'm trying to say. So let me just say, okay, this is all radiation water. I'll clean up the mess, but poor baby is in there, because everybody goes to the beach, right? But we don't seem to get that maybe the beach become not safe. Well, you're not going to see things coming out dead. Ratin, dead, because you'll never see this, just like no one has ever seen, the dead bodies coming out of those gas... The dead bodies coming out of those gas chambers in Poland. Not one of us have seen that. You're not gonna see all these dead ocean life because they all sink to the bottom. There's no floating bodies, so it's like there's no, no crying. You're not ever gonna see that. That's why I hid it underneath, because you'll never see that. Never. All you're gonna see is, oh, maybe I haven't seen a dolphin maybe in three years. That's what you're gonna see. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tenjoma. Anybody have questions? I see Board Member Perry, if you have any questions, please line up to the microphone. And then we're going online to Board Member Perry and then Vahilani.
You. Can you save your present, Representative Jutukuda's office present? About Senator Shimabukuro? Anybody present? Okay, so. Dr. Tenjoma brings up very good issues, but by the time he comes to Hawaii, it's too late. The, the marine life all contaminated. So the reason I'm asking for Representative Tukuda is. There should be monitoring now. As far as the US boundaries goes, start monitoring the marine life. If it reaches Hawaii, the whole, our whole ocean is contaminated. The next generation will be faced with unexplainable. Disabilities that may affect women's reproductive organs. You know, there, there's autism. There was a time where there was not enough studies about autism, but now there's studies. That, that may be what the next generation will be. Like unexplainable diseases or deformity. It's not only impacting Hawaii, it's impacting everybody that exists in the Pacific Ocean. That's who impacted. So our government need to do due diligence and start monitoring. Or take an EIS of what we have now, the conditions that is currently now and the condition thereafter. That's on federal level that needs to be doing that now and state level to do something now. Again, by the time it impacts us, it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Perry. Board Member Vahilani?
Aloha, Dr. Tenjoma, thank you for bringing this issue up. How many years ago was that with the reactor going off in Fukushima? You're so right about that. I'm glad you brought it back up because that, this is a major, major concern. And for us as water people, you know. Yeah, I sure as hell won't, won't want my great, great grandchildren, you know, being harmed by birth because of. You know, the leakage to my knowledge. Fukushima reactor is still leaking into the, into the ocean. Is that, is that correct, Dr. Tenjoma?
The, the dump has already started this year, August 24th. And what people don't realize is this is gonna continue for thirty to fifty years. It's not only one time. It's gonna be continuous.
So doctor, if it's okay, we can leave your number with Vice Chair Wilbur. And then I can get it, if you don't mind, I'd like to collaborate, because this is, yeah, this is a major concern and. This is a very major concern. So I would like to offline and collaborate with you more. You know, and start doing some action on that. So thank you, doctor. I can appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, mahalo. So we are now moving right along. Mrs. Watanabe. I believe we already established that she's not present. So moving on to Mike Ewall, Waste and Dump Sites. Mike Ewall?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, aloha.
Aloha and mahalo for having me. Let me see. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, so we are gonna be doing five minutes and we're hoping to actually include the questions in that as well. As we are set at seven forty-seven and only.
Understood.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let me see if I can get the PowerPoint started. There we go. Okay, so my name is Mike Ewall, I'm with Beyond Burning and also the founder of Energy Justice Network. And been working with local groups, Kakuana Aina and the Hawaii Clean Power Task Force. On a number of waste and energy issues throughout the state. Here's just an overview of where most of the industrial facilities are concentrated on the island in Campbell Industrial Park. This is where the H Power Trash Incinerator is located, which I'll be discussing. And a lot of other things are concentrated on either there or on the Yni Coast. The bullet points at the top, above the line are already there. Although there's an ash recycling plan that's a proposal. And the ones below that green line are a number of different companies that are targeting the island. Or sometimes other parts of the state for other facilities that are of concern. So I don't need to spend much time telling you about the landfills that you know are in your area. So I'll go over some of these pictures here. This here, you might recognize as a map of where the county has been looking at building a new landfill. Initially looking at the white areas on there, but they've been tossed out because they're both aquifers. Now they're looking more at the gray areas at military or federal lands. And that process is still going on to figure out where to locate the new landfill. Of course, another one that needs to be replaced is the landfill for the construction demolition waste, the PVT landfill and not a cooling. Which is filling up as well. And you probably already have seen this and are aware of the fact that people living around that landfill, ten years shorter life expectancy, according to the federal government. Now, one of the concerns I have based on folks I've been talking to throughout the islands is. The need to avoid divide and conquer type of approaches to landfills. No one is going to want to have a new landfill in their community. And having neighborhood boards and others at least come together on common principles of. What are the things that you'd want to see, no matter who gets the landfill, to make sure it's managed in the best way? And so these are some of the criteria that we've been looking at. That might be something that you might want to support to make sure that landfills are as least harmful as necessary. Now, one of the reasons why they're so dangerous is because at least in the case of Waimea Gosh landfill. They have incinerator ash is largely what's going into that landfill. And that comes from the H Power Trash Incinerator in Kapale in the Campbell, in the Campbell Industrial Park. That incinerator is the third largest in the nation. It can burn up to three thousand tons of trash a day. But only operates at about sixty percent of its capacity. And the two older burners there, they're missing two of the four pollution control devices that most trash incinerators in the country have. They're missing the one that reduces the nitrogen oxides that trigger asthma attacks. And they're totally missing the one that also reduces mercury and dioxin, some of the most toxic chemicals known to science. The newer burner, which is only ten years old, whereas the older ones are reaching retirement age soon. But the newer one is also something that would be illegal to operate and build today. Because even though they have controls for the nitrogen oxides that trigger asthma attacks, they don't meet modern standards. Modern standards would be much more stringent than what they're held to. And we see from the EPA's emissions data that they're one of the largest air polluters on the islands. For a lot of different pollutants, they rank either first or third or fourth. And they put out a significant amount of air pollution. Now, this industry is one that's going away. In most areas of the country, they are closing down, not opening up new incinerators. They're down to sixty-six as of this year, two more just closed this past year. And their average age, when the last fifty there closed since two thousands, their average age when they closed was twenty-four. The older two burners that you have at H Power now thirty-four this month. Now, when we compare using EPA's data to coal power plants, which we know are dirty. They turn out to be much dirtier than even burning coal by most measures. And the ash produced from them, it doesn't just disappear. Waste doesn't turn into energy, it turns into toxic ash. About thirty percent of the tonnage going into H Power comes out as ash that has to go and be landfilled. And one of the concerns is that we've learned that there's a serious intention by the county to build an ash recycling plant. Right next to the incinerator and basically use this ash to build roads. Which means linear unlined landfills, wherever they use this for roads. That will be exposing people more than if they dumped it in one place in a landfill with a liner system. Now, I'm running close, I'm running out of time here, so I'll just go from the last three sides real quick. The largest incinerator in the country is run by the same company, Cavanta. And that county where it's located, not far from me in Pennsylvania. Has done a life cycle assessment study and found that incineration, which is the first two bars here. Depending on whether you give them some discounts for their emissions. Are far worse than going straight to a landfill. Mostly in terms of climate change, which is in blue, but also in terms of the brown and red ones that affect heart attacks, strokes, cancer and birth defects. And the yellow, which is the pollutants that trigger asthma attacks, the nitrogen oxides. Make it much worse to burn trash than to go straight to a landfill. That's what the best science shows us. And the science is echoed in your own state where in Hawaii County, they did a similar study for recyclables. And found basically that recycling is best, landfilling is not good. But shipping the big island's waste or recyclables rather to burn at H Power and then landfill to ash is even worse. And this is just the chart that shows that, but I don't have time to explain that, but happy to answer any questions and answers. So finally, the last thing here is that Hawaii County recently had a study that's being commissioned. And one of the options they're looking at is to barge their trash to your island to burn at H Power. And then possibly, but not guaranteed, take the ash back to Hawaii County. So that's something that would possibly need a change in the law in Hawaii or in your county. But it's a concern that we hope you would share. So I'll leave it there. Thank you very much for your time.
Mahalo. I believe there is a question in the chat for you, Mike, if you can connect with our councilwoman. If you have a website or the company you're presenting on behalf of, is your question?
I'm not standing on behalf of any companies, just to be clear, with a nonprofit organization. But yes, I'll look for that side. Thank you.
And you. So I have a board member, Vahilani?
Hey Mike, thank you for, thank you for bringing up that information. And if you could please share your, your contact with Vice Chair Wilbur Seiken. I really would like to collaborate with you as well. Because you know, us on the Yni Coast, we've been the dumping grounds historically since nineteen oh nine. You know, the Wahoo Railroad would, would gather up rubbish from Honolulu and would dump it. To a dumping ground and. You know, it's scary what you're saying, but it's true. And we have a million people that live on this island already. And you know, because of the situation we're in, we can't, we can't stop people from moving here. You know, because that would at least help out with the situation. But I really would love to collaborate with you, Mike, and thank you for your presentation tonight. Appreciate it.
Mahalo, Ellen. Thank you for those comments and I'll drop me information in the chat so we can be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I'm gonna put my email and contact information so that we can connect and then I'll forward your information to, to fellow board members. And then we're going to Board Member Perry.
Thank you for the information. Have you did a presentation with our state legislature and the Department of Health? About what not to do and what not to do, what is the alternative of what not to do?
Yes, we, yes, did a presentation in September at the state Capitol. And have met with some state legislators in the past year. But yes, there's always more meetings, you're welcome.
You introduce yourself to Department of Health?
I've been hoping to get a meeting with them because I've been working with their sister agency in another state that passed a law that. One of your state legislators is looking to introduce as well. And so that's something that we have a dialogue started and we hope to be moving with them as well.
Okay, Senator Shimabukuro can work with you if you're online, please work with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in person with questions? Okay, I have Mr. Salsero.
Aloha, Mike. Okay, you folks already have the measurements already of the poor air quality that's in the area. Now the community needs to know exactly what they can take to the checklist they can take to their physician. Because of the permissible exposure limits that one person can take. And that should be based on their medical records and evaluation. But for a physician with airborne contaminants, he doesn't know what to evaluate for under their own laboratory testing. So is there an evaluation that can be taken to their private physicians? For any type of lab test examination, so that the physicians can take a baseline? And see if there's any further years later of any higher levels that should be concerned. Because it'll affect their internal organs as well besides their lungs because of the poor air quality. Is there a checklist that they can take to their physician? That's the question.
Yes, there's information like this slide I presented in terms of what pollutants are coming out. But I think, and I'll look for it, if I can find it, I'll share a link in the chat of a fact sheet that explains the pollutants coming out and what health effects that they cause. And that might be more helpful to bring to a physician if there's concern.
Yeah, and I agree with Board Member Perry because she is correct. Our legislature right now, they're, it's because of the health, health conditions for the whole community that they're in their, in their district. So they're gonna come up with some type of evaluation, medical evaluation to take to the, for the physician, to their physicians. For evaluating and such. So please, can you share this checklist to the board? And somehow the board will convey this message to our state representative legislation. Because we, they can propose type of fundings. For medical evaluation and sometimes maybe funding for some type, some type of subsidy to assist with these medical evaluations as such. Because again, the nine six seven nine two has been heavily impacted by of the waste. Because this ash, is it a, this is a land cover, not buried, but it's a land cover that can be picked up and airborne. Is that correct?
That is correct. It can blow off of trucks and it can blow off the top of the landfill. Since they do not use landfill cover for the ash, they pretend that the ash is covered for itself. So it can, if dried enough or with enough wind, blow into the community.
So maybe that's a measurement area, what this, this, this ash contains and take it to the neighborhood board. So we can make, take it to the, our community, take it to their physicians for an evaluation. Maybe that's what I'm trying to get at. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mahalo. So I do have one in person, Board Member Gonaban and then to Board Member Crab. And Board Member Vahilani, do you still have your hand up or do you have another question?
I have another question after.
May I ask for us to communicate offline? I will get his contact. Only because time check, we're at eight oh one and we're still on agenda item six.
Okay.
Please, I will forward that information to you on his contact. So Board Member Gonaban, then Board Member Crab.
Terry Waugh, thank you again for presenting. I think your, your colleague actually presented the first time on this matter. And you are right regarding air, air quality and particulate matters. So it is a concern. The Department of Defense have recognized that in different theaters as well. Along with different states that had these issues with particulate matters and environmental. along with different states that had these issues with particulate matters and environmental issues with chemicals. So um, thank you again, and I wanted to reiterate, we are in support of what you're saying. Uh, we understand that what you're saying. And yes, it's an uphill battle for people to understand what is going on. You know, especially because of it's it's only affects basically our community, but they don't realize that it's actually affecting the whole west side because our our trade winds shift between east to west to north to south. So at at any time, different communities are being affected. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you again.
Mahalo. Board Member Crab.
Um, hi, Mike. Um, quick question. For air quality, um so like on our phones, um like the weather app or whatever, it can show like the air quality of an air area. And then like um on the news, when they talk about um like wildfires, they show um the air quality like measurements for that. Um, for the stuff that you are talking about, for the regular air quality test, do they not test for those? Like, do they not take those considerations into those tests? Is that um what's happened with these air quality testings?
The air quality testing information you see on your phone is based on maybe one or a few very common pollutants that they can measure in the background air, things like nitrogen oxides or particulate matter, um which are things that come out of H Power, but also come out of cars and all sorts of things. Um, there are, there are many other pollutants that come out of H Power that are toxic and dangerous that will not be coming out of other things commonly like tailpipes and and heating systems. And that, I think, is even bigger concern. Um, but it's not being measured. It's not something you're going to ever find out from your phone. And even at H Power, they measure usually just once per year and they do the tests themselves. They don't know what's coming out day to day, which is why we're seeking um legislation to correct for that.
Perfect. No, that's really good because we've been having our um oceans having issues with that too. Um, they're not testing for all the things that, you know, could be inside there. So perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Ewall, really quickly, if you can put your contact information or websites and things in the chat as community members online um that is participating would like to be in contact with you as well.
Absolutely. We'll do that in a moment soon as we're moving on to the next speaker.
Um, and then any other questions? Okay, so no, she's ready to. Um. Oh, okay. Uh, and then I just wanted to, um, there's a couple of questions in this chat. I will address at some point this evening. Thank you for the questions. But if you can please leave your contact information for the community to see. Mahalo, Mike, for your time and for being here this evening. We appreciate your information. Um, and then we're moving right along to agenda item number six point four, Rebecca Garrison with the Red Hill Coalition.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Y and I Neighborhood Board. My name is Rebecca Garrison and I am a community organizer with Hapa and the Sierra Club of Hawaii. I first want to thank you all so much for this opportunity to speak this evening, particularly as somebody who does not call Y and I home. Uh, I live in Manoa. I'm a white settler born and raised in Humboldt County, Northern California. Those are the indigenous homelands of the Hoopa, Koruk, Mato and Wia peoples. I'll first begin by giving a brief history of the resolution, which is titled "A Resolution Urging the Immediately Immediate Defueling and Permanent Decommissioning of the Entire Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facility." The first draft of this uh resolution was actually penned by then director of Sierra Club of Hawaii, Marty Townsend, who we have in the audience with us this evening. Um, and in twenty seventeen, uh, the first push for this resolution uh was passed by eleven neighborhood boards. So just in that first year, there was already a great um galvanized effort for this resolution to be passed. And the vision of Marty Townsend was for it to become the first ever island-wide supported resolution in the history of the Oahu Neighborhood Boards. And since twenty seventeen, I am really excited to announce that we have been able to get passed on the Neighborhood Boards. Thirty-one of thirty-three Neighborhood Boards have passed this resolution. So it's a major, major feat and we're really, really excited about this resolution and we're here to urge you to pass this resolution. Um, a little bit more, uh, you know, thinking about how it's actually the water that's bringing us together. You know, it doesn't matter the color of your skin, the zip code, it doesn't matter your uh your political affiliation. It doesn't matter if you are uh connected to the military or not. We are all here deserving of a basic human right, and that is clean, unpolluted drinking water. It's actually the aquifer calling us together to be united in this front. And so again, we're really excited about this resolution. Um, and you know, if there's any whereas clauses that are a little funky to you or you think there's a little bit of a narrative that needs to be revised, we are more than happy to work on that with you. Um, we've done that with other Neighborhood Boards in the past as well. So again, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. And Susan, is there anything else you'd like to add? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Any questions, board members? Anyone online? Okay.
Again, question.
Uh, Board Member Perry and then Board Board Member Vaheilani.
I know Susan had been coming to a board meeting trying to get support and Chair was gonna put it on the agenda, never happened. Are we taking a vote to support the resolution tonight?
Um, unfortunately, it is not an agenda item for us to take a vote. We would have to put it on in an agenda, as an agenda item for us to vote on anything. According to our rules, that's posted at the top of our agenda.
Okay, can we put it on the tonight's agenda because Susan has asked the Chair to put it on the agenda because it was heard at the Hawaiian Affairs Committee meeting and she's been asking and it it never made the agenda. So I would like to add that on the agenda for a vote. Thank you.
Uh, hi, Board Member Perry. It's Jeffrey. Um, so just as, I'm gonna echo off of what Tiana said. Um, since it was not included on this agenda, it can't, there can't be any action taken on it. But what you guys can do is you guys can put in a a motion to have it considered, just as um Agenda Item Four was, to have it considered for the next meeting's agenda.
Is that December?
Tentatively December, confirm January.
So just point of clarification, sir. Um, we had voted in July for recess in December as our councilwoman has her meeting on December fifth, which is our board meeting. So it's been voted on already and there was a request sent to the Chair to add that on the agenda for us to vote to have it back on because of community concerns and things that needed to go on the agenda. But those requests were not added to the agenda and that's kind of the issue that I've been having. And this is why I stated what I stated because I've been on a lengthy phone calls and NCO telling me that we can't vote on anything unless it's on the agenda. So um unfortunately, it was put on as a presentation and not an agenda item. So what is your advice to us? Do we wait for January or?
Chair, um Vice Chair, Tiana?
Go ahead.
Can I, can I make a comment? Like, um, I remember that um she, Susan came to our Hawaiian Affairs Committee and we had, I believe we had voted at the Hawaiian Affairs Committee to pass the resolution and put that resolution on um on the agenda. But but now you're saying that um I guess Chair didn't put it on. It was requested. That's kind of a bummer. So it looks like where we can, it's gonna be January that we can, we can take action, put it on and we can vote and and get it, you know, get our board on on with the rest of the boards on the wall. Because this is a very, and I preach it to the choir, but this is a very fricking important issue too. And sorry, Becca, sorry, Susan, that is freaking taking so long. We'll do, get this out.
Yes, I.
I'm gonna make um, I'm gonna make a comment on two different things. One that was made in the chat after this one. Um, so yes, I would recommend it being put as a, making a vote to have it a- as a board, have it put on the next agenda for this item, at least so it can, the vote can happen and can take place. It can be, it can be a set agenda item. Um, there is, um, there was something that was put into the the chat um about minutes. Um, that is, that is understood that there were um due to some things happening at the NCO. There was a lot of miscommunications as far as minutes being done and incomplete. Um, those will, the ones that are missing, um, one was completed tonight, one will be approved tonight. The other one will be available uh shortly. Um, tentatively by the end of this week before, of course, the holiday Friday, being Friday. Um, yes, I do agree. I I completely agree. There's, there will be a violation. So I will make sure that gets done and sent and available to the public as soon as possible.
Okay, we'll take it up January agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Yeah, just wanted to say thanks again. Really appreciate you folks.
Thank you. Um, sorry, and Board Member Vaheilani. So our our Hawaiian Affairs meeting that we did, that was for previous board and unfortunately, it never made it on the previous board agenda before um the new board um took.
Oh, it's a bummer. Thanks, Tiana.
Um, so we are moving right along to agenda item six point five, Councilwoman Andrea Tupola.
Hi, aloha, Chair, aloha, board members. Thank you so much uh for the meeting tonight. And thank you for acknowledging and recognizing so many community members. I thought that was very beautiful. Is it possible that I share my screen? I'm not sure if you guys can see that, but I am gonna email you guys um this handout. And for those who aren't online, um, we can share it at another time or I can email it to you. So the two bills that Councilmember Dos Santos Tam and myself introduced are Bill fifty-seven and Bill fifty-eight. Both of them were introduced as tools to help crack down on game rooms. So Councilmember Dos Santos Tam represents the Kalihii area. And there is a huge amount of game rooms there and his community and my community as far as just the the type of movement and what they've needed for officers to help them really end this. Um, that's how we came up with this. We worked with the officers that are in Narco, the officers that are in Crewe and Kalihii got their feedback on tools that have been helping them. One particular game room that was taken down by HPD right across K- K- Kalihii Elementary, they literally did it this way, which was working with DPP because they were in illegal buildings, but they were also building without a permit, running these game rooms in illegal structures. So briefly, Bill fifty-seven is making gambling a nuisance in the law and this would add this as a public nuisance. Now, the word nuisance isn't really clear. It's not a a specific thing because we have nuisances about substandard buildings, we have nuisances about weeds and trash. And there's different consequences for nuisances. Some of it is a fine, some of it is that you have to remove it. So for this particular bill, Bill fifty-seven, it would become a nuisance and then you would get a notice of violation that this activity is a nuisance in the community. And then if they didn't correct the nuisance, then they would start to get fined. And that would be the notice of um after the notice of violation. So one of the suggestions from the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board that we'll be putting in a CD is it a timeframe on how long they get to correct the nuisance instead of an indefinite timeframe. Moving on to Bill fifty-eight, Bill fifty-eight specifically talks about authorized personnel and responsible persons. Both of these definitions already exist in the law. Authorized personnel is written in the revised ordinances of Honolulu and it already designates that an officer or an inspector who has been designated by the building official or deputies, deputized by the chief of police. So that's the definition of authorized personnel. The definition of responsible person in the law says any property owner, tenant or person with an interest in real property. So Bill fifty-eight seeks to correct in three areas of the law that authorized personnel can give evidence to DPP in regards to an ongoing case. If this case is related to something illegal and there is an illegal structure involved or there is danger within that building that this DPP instructor or inspector doesn't have access to that information, but maybe HPD is already running some type of operation where they have evidence that this in fact was built illegally or there are illegal things happening inside. The last thing is that every reference to person says responsible persons. The only reason we changed that in the law is because right now it's kind of unclear and previously it was always the game room operator. So it's the cashier, it's the person running the operation, but nothing has ever really tied down the crime to the actual owner or landlord of the building. And we really want to make sure that we're encouraging landlords and people who own these commercial spaces or homes where game rooms are being run, guns are being trafficked, that they are responsible for the people that they rent to and that they allow to use their spaces. So that's Bill seven and Bill fifty-eight. I want to thank uh Board Member Ganaban for going on um PBS Insights. So he was there to commentate as well as the board chair from Nanakuli. I want to thank all of the HPD officers, the Major of Narco Vice, um, Major Mike Lambert for working with us on this, as well as all the officers that have been ongoing trying to keep our community safe, keep guns out of our community and keep these nuisances um shut down. We had twenty-five game rooms as of August this year. Right now, we're at sixteen and the follow-up town hall that I'll be hosting to talk about what improvements have been done will be on December fifth. So we have a um first reading or a second reading for this bill next week in one of the city council hearings. And so the zoning hearing, I'll be emailing that information out. I just wanted to share this with everyone as this is one of many issues that have led to an increase of violence and an increase of shootings. Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, Councilwoman. Um, any questions, board members? I have, um, we'll do Board Member Perry and then Board Member Ganaban.
Again, Councilmember, can you state your December meeting, date, time and location? Thank you.
It'll be December fifth at Arca Safety. Doors open at six P M.
Thank you.
I, Councilmember Tupola. Hey, this is uh, so we have to look at also implementing um how to deal with game rooms that are actually disguising themselves as legitimate arcade games.
Are you talking about the one on the corner on Farrington?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. So we have to kind of look at how to implement that, that law to address those issues too, yeah.
Well, and I would say to to your point, Member Ganaban, is I don't know if a lot of people know that they're running a game room on the beach right across Lululele, so at Le Havas. It's in this, it's in those tents. So I mean, these guys are getting real creative at all these locations. I mean, that one on the corner makes it look like it's Fun Factory inside there. So anytime you know of a game room, we need you to pass it over to our Narco vice division. And Major Lambert will be leading the discussion as well as um, you know, the other officers that are handling this. But thank you for bringing it up. We're concerned because it's popping up everywhere. Violence is increasing, so we need to address this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other board members?
Uh, Board Member Crab, please. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, Councilmember Tupola, sorry, really quickly, clarifying question. For the increase in um violence and crime, is it, do you know if they've been increasing because of the drug usage um associated with the game rooms or more so like because of gambling? Like, like interfighting around the gambling?
I feel like the gambling is the least of their concerns. I mean, gambling happens in game rooms. Sure, the drug use is in is is an issue, but it's also the amount of guns and shootings that happen, right? So the shooting on Jade Street in Makaha, we had another one that where two people that were playing games got shot, but the officer was on the roof and he got shot and fell off. So like, it's because there's so much cash inside.
Hmm.
So like, if you have a place that has that much cash just sitting around, that's why people want to get inside there. So and once um HPD goes down, takes away the machines, tries to shut it down, because it's so cash flush, they just get a new venue and then open up again because they can drop another hundred grand, you know, and get everything back. So it really is the amount of cash, the violence that happens when people get greedy. And then, of course, you can't call the cops if someone steals your stuff. You just gotta take it into your own hands. So it's people within there, but also people leaving the game room where the shooting will happen when they're trying to exit or when they're leaving with stuff that they're not supposed to have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mahalo. Um, any community members with questions for Councilwoman? I'm seeing no hands. I want to say thank you, Councilmember, for your, oh, yes, go ahead. Is this?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chair. Oh, oh. Hey, Andrew, good to see you. Um, thank you for this and I just wanted to make the comment. It's just mahalo you, you know, for your due diligence and always being out there and doing what is best for our community, whether it's cleanups or whatever, I mean, done so just getting it done so much. our community, whether it's cleanups or whatever, I mean, done so just getting it done. So mahalo me, sister. And uh, since we're gonna see you next on the fifth, so mahalo.
Mahalo, Koko, who, um, Chair, I'm not sure if you guys are able to. I know on the other board they did, but if you guys do want to take a motion as a board to support it, um, we are going to have our first hearing next Wednesday at nine A M. If you guys don't take a motion, that's fine, too. You guys can come to the city council and testify. It's super important to me that as a city council member and the neighborhood board is a city city entity that if you guys do agree with it, you think it'll help the community, that you come and bring your voices. To be honest, I introduced this bill with Tyler, um, who is the rep or the council member for Kalihii, but all the testifiers were all from Waianae. So I leaned over to him and I was like, where's your Kalihii people? I was like, we'll be representing. So he said, oh, that's my bad. I'll get my people out there. So like, I need everyone's support. This is not a small issue. There are multiple shootings related to people in game rooms and I would really love everyone to either come testify or have the board take a position. Mahalo.
In the chat, if you can just put in the hearing time and date as some community members are asking. Please just mahalo, Councilwoman. Have a great night. Okay, moving right along. So we're now to Presentation six point six, the added agenda item uh for Gabrielle Sumner.
Aloha, everybody. Um, I'm here to present um for an SMA permit. Um, I'm just going to share my screen here. Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Um, yes.
Okay, um, I'll just get started here. So um, this project location is at eight four nine three one Farrington Highway. Um, the total affected area is a zero point three five five two acre parcel. Um, the property is currently undeveloped with no structures. Um, the land use is classified as urban. Um, it is not in a state special district. Uh, it's zoned R ten residential. And it is in a special management area. Um, the flood zones are A E V, E, and X. Um, so the project description is um building a five-bedroom, three-bathroom home with an incorporated one-bedroom, one-bathroom A D U. Um, the building area is three thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square feet, um, which is less than the allowable maximum building area of zero point five times the lot area of six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Um, the house is also being constructed beyond the fifty-five-foot shoreline setback. Um, total impervious area is fifty-eight percent, um, which is well belus- well below the seventy-five percent um per land use ordinance. Um, drainage um of stormwater would be onto the landscape areas surrounding the home. And the dwelling would be constructed a foot and a half above the floodplain. Um, then I just have a site location map here showing the site. This is the TMK map of the parcel. Um, this is a site plan. Um, and we show where the shoreline is and the fifty-five-foot setback. Um, here is the north elevation. And the proposed south elevation. Here's the east elevation. And west elevation. And then um here is our sea level rise mapper um showing the project location in reference to the um three point two foot scenario. So we're well behind that. Um, and that concludes my presentations and I can take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Um, I believe we have a few questions here. Uh, Board Member Kale Wuber.
Hi, Gabrielle. Thank you for your presenting. Um, my question is uh um, and I'm pretty sure it's the rest of Makaha's question is um, growing up, that was a very frequented beach and where you're do you're planning to put the dwelling was our access point to that beach. Uh, and uh, the 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 concern is the rest of the community and the limited access to that beach. There's, there is um no- nothing on your presentation that shows the access points. Um, and is another access point um in consideration uh because yeah, uh, the two are few and far between, you know, um each other. And um, is there is a possibility that you can uh include that or bring that into your presentation? Um, so that we have a better understanding of of the uh, a community being able to still utilize that beach once the structure goes up. And are you guys willing to add a third access point on um off off your property?
Okay, yes, those are very good questions and um I'm going to field these questions and speak with Rachel and then um we can follow up at the next Neighborhood Board meeting.
Thank you.
Um, and then we're going to go to Board Member Crab and then to Board Member Ganaban.
Hi, um, question. For this, are you just the, or are you folks just the developer or um, is this for someone's like residence like already or is it just planning to be like like built and then sold?
Um, so we are representing the applicant of the um special management area permit, which would be the owner of the dwelling. Um, we're just environmental consultants that um basically um assess the special management area permit and um and present on it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, um, so I'm actually looking at the plans that you have actually up and this is actually really set back into the ocean. And I know the owners as well as you guys don't know this area um very well, but I guarantee you this property is going to be I can already see it approaching on on actual beach access on the shoreline as well. Um, because it's the setback you show here. Um, I already know how these developers work and they will actually maximize the line that they have once it's provided. And because this um high tide mark actually uh fluctuates and actually you can see the high tide mark, that's not even a high tide mark, that is just a regular surf line. But when it's on the winter time, it actually even goes higher than that. Um, it actually goes up to that vegetation in the next property over. So you guys are going to be actually at um we're going to have an issue because it's not supposed to buil- build past um the water line, right? And so how far the water goes is basically where you're supposed to sit back at. Um, and that's what's going to happen. So uh, as uh Board Member Wilbur said, it's the concerns of community access. We have a right-of-way to the beaches. This is the main area that was the right-of-way. Two properties over, they closed it up and I seen they they just recently opened it up. And I seen that was opened up, so they would be able to give you guys um able to close this access up. So that's a concern I still have and how far it actually is going on to the beach.
Thank you. I will take the concerns um back to Rachel and we'll address them at the next meeting.
Okay, and then we have two more questions. One from Community Member Mike, if you can state your name for the record and then Auntie Kale Salsero.
Michael Willem Capolino Eli. Yeah, like just like what they're saying. Over here, the thing look like this already. They're already flattened, man. You put one gate in on the wall. But you know what? Somebody went drown over there and the lifeguards, good thing they had on car. Because they didn't cut that gate open and then save somebody right there on a tip of the sand. Where 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 she get her markings over there? The shore break went slam on holy guy and he didn't drown. They didn't save him. They cut the gate and they didn't save him the lifeguards. But you see the house next door, that's my friend. He's living there for years. His name is Big Daddy. So he's lying where his property lines stay over there by the coconut tree over here on the square right here. Twenty years. Over, over twenty years, maybe thirty, maybe forty. His name is Big Daddy. He live right there next door. And you got to have an access point, but like like the outer side, they just went open them up. But just like what Ganaban said, they just went open them up. So they got, we got to have an access point for the lifeguards and the community. Because now that gave one gate, let's get planning homeless in there. So they put one gate in on the wall so nobody can enter. But now somebody go clean the outer lot, now they can go through that way. But yeah, you guys got to have an access point. And I think got to go more back, you guys uh it is sixty feet, whatever, what, you guys had fifty, fifty-five feet? You guys got to be in line with the outer houses right next door. Because you're going, you're going jam up the um, the circulation of the sand. Yeah, and you're going to get erosion. You guys too far, you guys stay too far to the sand. Aloha.
Thank you.
Auntie Kale and then Gabrielle, is there any way we have um contact info and things or that I can get community members questions so we can forward it to you guys? Um, also, I guess I would request that you guys um, if we can have copies of these um, this presentation and the plans, but also if you guys can attend a planning and zoning or permitting and zoning committee um before you guys move forward on on um your project. Because there's a lot of discussion that is missed. Um, I know there's some questions of how high is this building? Um, because you can't necessarily see the presentation clearly. Um, and then just other concerns um that has been stated. So I'm going to go to Auntie Kale Salsero and then Mr. Salsero and Board Member Perry.
Um, Tiana, before they go, can I add a quick, is this a presentation that you guys would like on the community drive? The Google Drive? Just to avoid it being sent to every single person, I could just put it on the drive? Um, Gabrielle, a question, um, Jeffrey, the I'm the N A for the board. Is this a presentation that you guys would allow a full community access to, not so much, not editing, of course, but for them to view it on a Google Drive?
Yes.
Okay, I will um, I'll send you my um contact email if that could be sent. That way the community as well as the board members can see this presentation itself. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Guys, I'm just going to time check here. We're at eight thirty-four. If whoever is left for questions, if you guys can sum up that question in like thirty seconds or less. Um, because again, we're only in Agenda Item six. We haven't even got to seven and we have eleven items on this agenda.
Okay.
Please and thank you. I appreciate all of you.
I'll, I'll make it very fast. Am I about to talk? Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is this developer, is it a Hawaii developer or and the landowner, is it a H K? That's, that's the question. And the other one is, is it a foreign country developer or foreign country investment? That's what we want to know because if it's a foreign country investment, which is H K, that means they can, they don't have to find by the state laws or DPP laws and that's ve- very big concern. And the other concern is emergency access. And by developing towards the the beaches and the ocean, you are going to compromise the shorelines. And sooner or later, in a few years, you have erosion. So I really don't agree with this huge developing comes like that. And when you, this developing that you folks have, is it for rental develop? Or is it for a nonprofit organization develop? That is my question and concern. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Um, Uncle Austin Salsero. And then Board Member Perry.
Oh, my girl, I I I kind of uh I put my hand down, but this, the only thing I got to say is the D L N R Aquatics Division, they should have a take on this because it's going to suffer the same consequences as the North Shore of the erosion. That's a big issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mahalo for that. Um, Board Member Perry.
Gabrielle, um, do you need board approval or or one of the criteria just to present to the board?
Um, I think one of the criteria is just to present this in front of a board.
Uh, okay. Um, inform the the residents in the area and I believe the Waianae Coast Sustainable Plan is no building on the Makai side of Farrington Highway, which is where this project is. Thank you.
Mahalo, Board Member. Um, and then Board Member Crab, did you put your hand down or did you have another question?
Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment question thing. Um, hi, so for the line, um, because I know the the property, you know, for to make the driveway um on Farrington side, the line is like right at the border. It doesn't really go to the road, but I'm just saying that the driveway would have to be like created and fixed if that, hopefully that doesn't impact any environment over there. Thank you.
Mahalo. Um, thank you, Gabrielle, for your presentation and your time. If you can just send me, I'll forward my um information so you can send me an email and we can communicate offline. Um.
Um, Tiana, one more thing. It was, it was just dropped in the chat. Um, just to clarify, um so the board isn't allowed to com- is cannot deny an SMA permit request. Um, so the SMA, their requirement is to come present it to the board. We cannot dictate whether or not they can build or not. That's something that they go through their their given departments for. Just wanted to clarify that in the chat.
So, correct. Um, but definitely necessary discussions and concerns of the community can be addressed here and on our committee meetings. Um, so I don't know, Gab- Gabrielle, if that's um any matter on, you know, how the community feels and their concerns um on this, but but as far as if you needed a support or something from us, we would not be able to give that tonight as it was just a presentation. Um, and it's not on our agenda to take a vote or to say support or not support. Um, this item, there's obviously a lot of discussion that community has and would like um answers before they see something um, a project seen through. Um, so if you guys would consider having um more discussion in our committee meeting, we'd greatly appreciate that.
Um, Tiana.
Yes.
This, um, just for Gabrielle, it, you know, just just be aware, the same situation took place in Hawaii Kai when beach access wasn't granted and all the owners got sued. And they had, they had to pay a hefty fine of restitution to the public and then create those beach access points. Um, uh, just, just giving you a heads up on what you are possibly getting the rest of those owners into um in the upcoming future if these concerns are not addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo. I'm going to put my information in the chat. Um, so again, time check, we're eight forty and we will be moving on to Board Committee Reports and Membership. So I'm just going to go through the committee um and you can state your report or whatever very briefly. Um, so seven point one, Transportation, Tiana and Richard Lanford. Um, my report, if you would like an update on Makaha Bridge, um three A, then you would be able to attend my meeting this Thursday at six thirty in the craft room. Um, and you can get updates there, please, just for the sake of time. And then we have Housing, seven point two, Housing and Homelessness uh with Chair Cross Crab.
Yeah, sorry, really quickly for this um committee and also the Education Committee with um co- co-chair Endo. Um, on November twenty-first, um, six thirty through nine o'clock, we're going to be having those two meetings, Housing and Education, they're separate. But um, we're going to be having those meetings um hybrid at the um Waianae Satellite City Hall. But, um, we're gonna be having those meetings, um, hybrid at the, um, YNI Satellite City Hall Conference Room, in the back of the, the DMV. Thank you.
Mahalo. Um, seven point three, Hawaiian Affairs and Agriculture, with Kokohu.
Yeah, so we're, um, Tiana, are you still gonna co-chair with me on?
Yes, it's currently not on this agenda, that's fine. We can definitely work on it.
We're, we're tabling for November, and starting out in December.
Okay. Um, seven point four, Parks and Recreation, Kole Wilbur and Richard Lanford.
Um, thank you Chair. Um, we've been having our, our, um, our committee meetings the second Tuesday of, of every month. Um, with our next meeting being next Tuesday, uh, six thirty at, uh, right here, at the YNI Complex, in the Arch, Arch and Craft Room. Uh, lot of, lot of work being done, and, and efforts to rectify and, and try and, uh, get, um, Ka'au Beach Park, a resolution there, uh, resolved, and, and, um, and that's a lengthy process. Um, hats off to the, uh, the people that have been involved, um, all these years, and, um, and working diligently to get that, um, seed through. Being, I'm, I'm the new, new kid on the block, and I'm hoping to be able to, um, help push those things through for you guys. Uh, other concerns, other things that were brought up, I know, um, some new park benches were installed, um, at the, Pelela, no, Kaibea. And, uh, of course, we got our lights, uh, new LED lights at the Pelela Island Park, for all the fields, the, the whole complex, all nice and bright, and we don't have to worry about lights burning out. Hopefully, we can work on the, the trees, but that's, of course, we gotta coordinate the communication with, uh, tree trimmers, um, so that they can actually, uh, groom the trees, so that the lights will be more effective on the football field. But other, other than that, um, a lot of things coming down a pike for Parks and Recs.
Mahalo. Um, seven point five, Education, um, Chair Cross Crab, or Mr. Endo, you have anything to share for Education? I know he just announced November twenty-first. You guys are gonna, okay. He just stepped away from the computer, so, um, okay, moving right along, seven point six, DPP, um, Ganabon and Lanford.
We have not actively held one yet, but it's supposed to be on the third Thursdays of every month, at the craft room, or at the Satellite, whichever, um, is secured for us.
Okay. We will get that clarification when, uh, Agenda is submitted. Um, seven point seven, Public Safety, Ho'oman Avenue and John Travis. Um, as Chair isn't here, I'm gonna just move right along, seven point eight, Ho'oman Avenue. You can, you can go ahead. Mahalo.
Evening Chair. Uh, yeah, just to, with everything that's going on in the community right now, just a lot of community forums, a lot of, uh, meetings at the schools and whatnot right now, but other than that, no official main report at this time.
Um, thank you. Mahalo. Um, seven point eight, Ocean Safety, seven point nine, Military Liaison, um, seven point ten, Environmental, with Ho'oman Avenue and Dr. Tenjoma. Um, okay, so if we have, we're moving on to Agenda Item Elected Officials. Eight point one, US Representative Jill Takura. If we have anybody online? Or Jill Takura? Okay, um, if she comes on, then if you can let me know, Jeff, please. Eight point two, Council Member Andrea Tupola. Um, so I know, Kika said she jumped off as she did a five to seven minute. Um, Kika, did you wanna, did you wanna, um, share or report on, on anything? I know you gave us your, mahalo, your reports here.
Sorry, there's no reports, but we are open for any concerns or questions.
Mahalo. Anybody have anything for Councilwoman's Office? I'm seeing none. Mahalo Nui, Kika. And then, moving right along, eight point three, to State Senator Miley Shimabokoro. I think I seen Patrice on, yes.
Hi, guys. Hello. Um, I just shared the newsletter, um, in the chat, and here to answer any questions or concerns.
I have one. Is this, um, Mr. Salsedo, Uncle Austin?
Aloha, Patrice.
Aloha.
Aloha. Okay, uh, Darius Kila is gonna hold a Town Hall meeting, the end of this month. Uh, he's gonna hold, he is on, on separately. We, with, uh, Miley, uh, Representative, I mean, Senator Miley and Representative Gates gonna hold one for the YNI? That's a question.
Nothing is planned right now, um.
Because there was nothing this year, that's why.
I can actually, I'll get back to you regarding that. Nothing is planned as, um, for the rest of the year. But, um, if it is, I'll get back to you, the board, or actually, cuz we're, we're, next month is not meet, not gonna meet, right? Um.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason why, because there's a lot of legislation from last year. We don't know what's going on this year, and the community needs to know, because, uh, Darius Kila holds his in Nanakuli, we, you know, we're proud of that boy. But our District Forty-five and our District Twenty-two needs to be, uh, represented. So, we have a lot of questions over here that's impacted by the state.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we need, that's important. How do we get this information to us? Because there's no Neighborhood Board next month. How, how is this information gonna be passed to us?
I'm sure that, well, I already know nothing's gonna happen this year. Um, I don't think they're gonna put one together right before, um. So I guess, I will report back in January. I can report back in January what, um, what their plans. They usually have one in the very beginning of session. Like, I think last year, or this year, we had it, is it February or March?
No, it was January twenty-fifth, but it was based on, uh, homeless, uh, individuals over here at, uh, at the Comprehensive Cafe.
So about, that's when they normally plan it, like, I think it was January, the third week of January session started. And, um, so, I guess next, net, by next January, we should have some kind of report on when they plan to hold their next Town Hall together.
Okay, yes, it's important, because we can't just hold it for, you know, segregation, only for the homeless individuals. We need it for our district of the nine-six-seven-nine-two, the whole community, okay?
Yes.
So that's very important.
Get that back to her.
Mahalo. Um, go ahead, Board Member Perry.
Jeez, I sent you in the chat for the Senator to follow up with Dr. Tenjoma and Mike Ewell regarding these matters. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Auntie Kole Salsedo.
Aloha. Um, this is for our Senator.
Yes.
She should appreciate if you take this back to her. You know, what is the steps that's been taken, knowing that, uh, all the shooting, violence has been happening? When is, um, our legislatures gonna start stepping up? When a community needs help? Nine-six-seven-nine-two needs help. When is something gonna be done? When is, um, what you said, um, make it mandated at the age level? You know, stopping, um, anyone under age sixteen? Has to be, uh, accom- accompanied by an adult. When is, eh, she's gonna start taking a step? Because a lot of killings and shootings is being young, you know, at, uh, one o'clock, two o'clock, sometime even in the eight o'clock, ten o'clock at night, and they're underage. You know?
Yeah.
Should do a Marshall thing, where they turn around like before. A certain time, that curfew, you know? People is dying on, under, uh, our legislatures watch. And something needs to be, uh, action needs to be taken. We need, we need more, how you said? We need more emphasis on our community concern. Right now, it's like our community don't have no say, which we want, we do want, we need it. We're asking for it. I've been asking for a Town Hall meeting on a safety issue for our community, the nine-six-seven-nine-two. And I believe this is a delay. And I don't, like, you know, I, I, I really like to get pride in our service. But right now, the pride is not there, because all I see is nothing being done for the safety issue of the kapunas, the safety of the children. They're our lawmakers. You folks are there to serve your community. Serve your community, not only serve the violators that's violating the state law mandated signs, okay? But you have a lot of legit community concerns. Killing, shooting, even in our schools. You know, bullying. These is things our community has concern, and we cannot put them in a back door. It has to be addressed, and to be addressed.
Mahalo, Auntie Kole.
As a community concerned, to our legislatures, our people that we put in office. Now, at least give the people, the community, nine-six-seven-nine-two, the respect and respond to the call and we're asked, the respect to address this issue, nine-six-seven-nine-two. No one is addressing this issue as lawmakers, and it's a shame, very shameful, say, you said. And I pray for you guys. That's all I have to say.
Mahalo, Auntie Kole. See, any more hands for Senator? Thank you, Patrice, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, and then, we are eight fifty-four, and we are at Representative Cedric Gates on eight point four. Any representative for Cedric Gates' office? Rep. Gates. Okay, um, moving right along to eight point five, Representative Darius Kila.
I'm so sorry, Chair. Um, I couldn't get my microphone on by the time you moved on. Um, would I be allowed to, um, say something?
If you left the board meeting and came on as a representative.
Like, removed, like, went off the meeting, and then?
I don't know. Jeff, what is your advice on that? Do you want?
Uh, hey, uh, Board Member Krab, um, I'm gonna echo off of Vice Chair Tiana Wilbur. Uh, she is right, you would have to leave the meeting, since you are considered still a board member technically, and join back as a representative for Cedric Gates. And that's, that's kinda like the rule, so.
No, no, that's fine. Um, you know what? I won't, just because of time. I don't wanna waste anyone's time, so, just move on. Thank you.
Aloha, my, sorry, thank you. Um, so we are on Agenda Item Nine, Monthly Reports, so nine point one, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's Representative, um, Director Don.
Aloha, this is Don. Sorry, my camera isn't working. I only have a couple of issues.
Aloha, Don, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the first one is, there was a question about emergency siren warning system. Emergency sirens are installed and maintained by the State Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, or HAIMA. Please refer this to the Board's Governor's Representative, or a state legislator that represents the YNI area. HAIMA can also be contacted at seven-three-three-four-three-zero-zero, and I'll drop the, um, the email in the chat. Um, also, the other point I have is that, uh, this is just a friendly reminder that the YNI Sustainable Communities Plan Future Scenarios Workshop will take place tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, November eighth, from five PM to seven-thirty PM at YNI Elementary School. The goal of the workshop is to evaluate the recent trends identified by the community, and discuss ways we could adapt. Uh, we will explore possible future scenarios for YNI, and want to hear from you on what is the preferred future for YNI. Other than that, that's all I have, but I'm here for any questions, or, or other issues. Mahalo.
Board Members, any questions? We have Member Ganabon.
Hey, Don, um, I, I think you were on board when that, uh, presentation for that development in Makaha is coming through. Um, the board itself does not have any say on developments. Um, it is gonna be part of our sustainable, um, development to not allow more, um, development on the beach side. But, in the plans itself, if you guys could please review it, because it is approaching on beach access, as well as the high tide mark. That area, the sand actually disappears and comes back. So, not sure what areas, you know, needed to be addressed, but if you could please look into that as well, please?
Yeah, so for that, it's a SMA permit that will, first they come to you guys, to the Neighborhood Board, and then it will come to DPP, cuz they're required to share with the Neighborhood Board. So we will process the application, and that's exactly what we do. We, um, look for whether it, uh, hinders beach access, um, and how the structure is built, uh, within or close to the shoreline. So all, that's, that's the purpose of the SMA, to make sure beach access and other, um, issues regarding the shoreline are addressed. So thank you.
Mahalo. Any other Board Members? Okay, so I'm gonna go to Community Member, oh, okay, sorry, thank you, I was trying to look. Thank you, Board Member Perry, go ahead.
Don, I wanna just say happy holidays, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so Uncle Austin Salsedo.
Aloha, Don, thank you for all your services that you provide us. By one concern need to be taken to the mayor, and I wanna bring it to the Governors, or Representative as well, to the state, uh, the state officials, the Department, like the Department of Public Safety, our, uh, judicial system, our courts. Uh, they're providing, they're doing businesses, operations in the city land areas, or in our community. They're bringing businesses for jail diversion programs and all that, without, uh, viewing before the Neighborhood Board to bring it to their discretion. So, that's a major concern that's bringing up, bring about. So our Homeless Committee is, uh, is targeting this right now, and we're still waiting for a schedule to do a follow-up on this. But our mayor needs to be aware that the Department of Health, Department of Public Safety, and our judicial system is doing, uh, basically, un- unlicensed businesses, operations in the nine-six-seven-nine-two area. I'm not worried about everybody else, only nine-six-seven-nine-two. Okay, Don? So, uh, make awareness to the mayor on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Austin. I will.
Mahalo. Um, okay, so we are at nine oh one. Auntie Kole, would you be able to message your chat, tell me message in the chat, or communicate with Don offline? Please, so hopefully get through our agenda.
Well, it, it wasn't, um, for Don, I have, um, she's taking things very, uh, you know, serious. My con, um, it was just a concern I have. Ever since, um, this new board has started, we haven't had anyone from, uh, Representative, uh, Mr. Gates to be on, um, to address any issues, you know, in, in his office. So I don't know what's going on, why he haven't replaced, uh, or gotten somebody else, you know, on Representative Gates. So he's been MIA to address, uh, concerns, issues that, uh, the community was like, you know, has been bringing up. So that's my concern is just, you know, because, um, we can't have cross do it because there'll be a conflict of interest. So when is he gonna have someone to, to, uh, be available to take communities, uh, to take the concern to his office? So we, the ball had been dropped and, uh, that, it doesn't look good for, um, for nine six seven nine two and the community. That's all I have to say. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo, Antikale. Um, so, um, moving on to nine point two, Board of Water Supply, Christopher Sugamoto. I don't recall seeing his name tonight. Um, okay, we're gonna move right along to Governor's Rep, um, Stacy Lynn Eli.
Aloha Chair, Board Members, Community, um, Stacy Lynn Eli for the Governor's Office. I just wanna note that I did hear, um, Deputy Apana's, um, report. So I'm gonna make sure that I get you folks an update on the sirens. Um, I know that you're not gonna have a meeting next month, but I'll try to get an answer this month and maybe just email the board members so you can share with the community before January because it's kind of a long wait. Um, and I also took down notes on, um, Uncle Austin Salcedo's request to inform the governor about what's going on with, um, Department of Public Safety, Judicial Authority. So I'll make sure to share that with Governor. I also wanted to share with you folks that, um, as part of Governor's newsletter and his report, they wanted me to share that the Public, um, Safety Department did have a gun buyback program. Um, it was successful. Almost five hundred firearms were collected and eighty-two gun locks were given out. And so how this worked was a hundred dollar gift card was provided by the Public Safety Department for each handgun, rifle, shotgun, bump stock, and Glock switch, and a two hundred dollar gift card for each automatic firearm of any type, semi-automatic rifle, or ghost gun. A person could turn in as many firearms as they wanted, but the gift cards were limited to a maximum of three per person. Um, so I just wanted to share that. I know we're kind of pressed for time, so just happy I got to give my report this month. Um, but at this time, I can take questions or concerns that you folks want me to share with, with Governor and his team.
Um, I see Board Member Kali Wilbur.
Hey, Stacy, thank you for, for coming. Thank you for coming every meeting. Um, the question is on the buyback program. I mean, how many of those were actually registered firearms? And how many of those were ghost or illegal, uh, firearms that you guys were able to acquire?
I'll ask, um, the, I'll ask the Governor's team to find out from Public Safety and then I'll include that in my email to you folks about the sirens.
Mahalo. Um, and then Board Member Perry?
Thank you. Um, Stacy, Stacy, um, that was regarding, uh, a community. A resident wanting to know about installation, the siren at YNI Valley Road up in that area. Um, the buyback of guns, is there another, um, event coming up? Is that a schedule, what, twice a year?
Yeah, I believe that, uh, the Governor intends to have, um, another partnership in doing that. I'm just not sure about the date, but I'll find out as soon as possible and share that with you folks. So you can share with your community.
Okay, and, um, lastly, the cost of food is just ridiculous. So, yeah, thank you.
Mahalo.
Chair, again, question for Stacy.
Okay, um, you can go ahead. Member Vahilani.
Hey, Stacy, aloha, happy holidays.
Aloha.
So the, the guns that were, that were, um, I think folks got five hundred. But, um, what, so what is the process? Where does the guns get deposited? What, what happens to those guns?
Um, I'm, I'm not certain, so I don't want to guess, um, but I'll find out uh, what it is that they do with it and I'll report back to you folks.
Thank you, Stacy. Give the dad their mahalo and happy holidays.
Okay, mahalo. Looking forward to you singing and entertaining again.
Aloha.
Okay, um, Board Member Ganabon requesting for an extension of ten minutes to finish up our last, um, agenda items for the night?
Second.
Mahalo. So motion was moved by Board Member Ganabon and seconded by Board Member Vahilani to extend our meeting ten more minutes. Um, and we are at time check nine oh eight. So call for the question.
Okay, so the, was motion to have a ten-minute extension of time. Um, I'll go down the list one more time for the vote. Uh, Board Member Crap? Not too sure, I'll, I'll circle back. Uh, Endo? Ganabon? Lanford? Board Member Perry? Vahilani?
Aye.
Kali Wilbur? Tiana Wilbur?
Aye.
And one more time, uh, Member Crap? Not too sure, still on the meeting or from the computer? One more time for Board Member Perry?
Sorry, I was in, uh, unmute. I, I'm gonna leave at nine fifteen because I have to get up early in the morning. Thank you.
Oh, uh, Board Member Perry, would you like to be a part of the vote? An extension for the board meeting?
abstain.
Okay, thank you. So the motion's passed with six ayes and one abstain.
Mahalo, okay. So moving right along, we are on Agenda Item nine point four, U S Army Garrison Lieutenant Colonel Yun. Um, I don't believe he's online. Uh, okay. And so, um, nine point five, U S Navy Victor Flynn and Danny Hayes.
Aloha, Vice Chair, um, this is Danny Hayes. Um, sorry, I couldn't be there, uh, this evening. Um, I'm gonna try to go through this really fast so that I can, um, move on to, to any of your questions. Um, the, uh, Joint Task Force began defueling Red Hill last month. Uh, they started on the sixteenth of October and currently as of this afternoon, uh, they've defuelled seventy-four million gallons, um, of fuel from the facility out of an estimated one hundred and four million. So, uh, they're more than seventy percent, um, completed at this point. Um, and, uh, regarding the, uh, drinking water, uh, it is still safe. Um, that, that's on the, uh, Navy drinking water system. Uh, as a matter of fact, the, um, long-term monitoring information booth will be set up for people to help learn how to read their, um, water report. Um, on November eighth, uh, which is tomorrow, from four P M. to eight P M. At the, uh, Kapalina Night Market, they'll be having a booth there to help people out. Uh, they'll also have a booth on, uh, November sixteenth. That'll be, um, toward the, uh, housing areas over at the, uh, Mini Exchange over there and November thirtieth. Uh, I sent all of this in the, uh, bigger report, um, through email earlier. Um, last month, uh, we also, uh, the Navy also supported the Army's, um, site visit through, uh, Koli Koli Pass. And, uh, that was an opportunity to allow, um, representatives of the community to see that emergency, um, pass route and, uh, some of the challenges with it. Uh, but showing that there is cooperation if, um, there was ever in a declared emergency to, uh, be able to let the community pass. Um, with that, I will, uh, open it up to any questions, uh, Vice Chair.
I have a question.
Um, was that Board Member Vahilani?
Correct.
Who was that? Oh, go ahead.
Hey, Danny, happy holidays. Good to see you.
Happy holidays.
My question was, um, thankful that the Navy is defueling. So where, where's all that fuel going to or being stored at?
Uh, yeah, thank you for that question. Um, so there's several locations where they're sending that. Um, some of it is still on, uh, the joint base, uh, for regular operational use. And those are, uh, above-ground tanks, uh, that are already in place there. Um, so they're not, um, posing any danger to, uh, the aquifer. Um, others are, um, there's, uh, ships that are taking it to, uh, Campbell Industrial, uh, to some of the, uh, tanks that are over there. These are all above ground. And then other fuel is, um, being distributed through the, uh, uh, Defense, um, Logistics Agency. So they're basically spreading it throughout the fleet, um, to different locations for, uh, use there.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Any other questions for Navy? Mahalo, Danny, um, for being here tonight and sharing your report. Um,
Thank you.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We will see you in the new year. Thank you so much. Have a safe holiday season.
Thank you.
Aloha. And then moving right along, so, uh, Agenda Item ten, Board Business. Um, so ten point one, Approval of Initial Convening Meeting Written Summary for Video Record, Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, if somebody can make a motion to approve the minutes.
I most, I, I motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
So we have, um, Board Member Ganabon that motion to approve our September fifth minutes and it was seconded by Mr. Endo and Vahilani.
Okay, so for this one, we don't need a vote. If there are not any obje- objections, this can just be passed unanimously. We can approve the minutes.
Is there any objection? Okay, um, Johnny May, has your hand raised? Go ahead, Johnny May.
Um, there's no minutes attached.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is actually in person, um, they handed it to us here.
I can explain that. Um, Board Member Perry, hi, sorry about that. Yes, there was a miscommunication as far as with the NCO and the, and the circulation of NAs over the course of the last few months. The September minutes are done. They will be posted to the, um, NCO website as well as the October minutes and the August minutes will be posted as well for the community to see. And they can be approved, uh, they can be approved the next meeting.
I- is this in a long written, handwritten form or this is, um, short written minutes? Like, um, you know, once upon a time, the meetings, the, the minutes were long-handed. Now it seems to be, um, abbreviated or,
This, this is,
for the chat, I'm not saying.
This is abbreviated. It's, um, the new, the new way that the NCO is doing minutes. It's a way that we go based off of the, um, that's why on the, the minutes they are, um, stated to be, um, a video record because we're going based off of the YouTube video that's posted to the Neighbor Commission Office YouTube channel. So the timestamps that you see on minutes will be in regards to the video. That can help you see exactly what was said, um, on top of there being a brief summary, um, following each agenda item in the minutes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
So any objections to approving the minutes? I am seeing none. So our minutes are approved for September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Um, ten point two, Budget Approved for YNI Police Department. I believe that was, uh, um, Chair from Councilwoman's office last month that she was gonna provide for us that the budget was approved for YNI Police Station to, to be finally completed and functional for our community. Um, so yay, congratulations. Thank you for that. Um, ten point three, Working on Revising the Memorandum of Understanding, or M O U. Um, I don't have any record of this, um, and I tried reaching out to other members, um, like Officer Pagan and stuff to see what is currently being worked on. And I don't believe there's anything currently being worked on as far as that M O U. Um, does anybody have any clarifying questions or anything on that? Okay, um, so moving right along, ten point four, Identifying and Evaluating Alternate Strategies for Traffic Corrective Actions. Um, that is definitely something we can discuss on Transportation Committee as we need the details on what specifically we're, we're trying to evaluate. Um, so I would defer ten point four to a transportation discussion, um, and then bringing it back to our, to our board, uh, our general board meeting. Uh, so ten point five, Livestock Management and Feral Animal Concerns. Um, it looks like there's a statement in there of Officer Pagan agreed short of personnel. Um, so maybe that's something we can add to our permitting or plan, yeah? Okay, so that we will also defer to committee, uh, for discussion. And then we will bring it back to the general board. And then ten point six, Pending Projects or Permits for New Home- Homeless Shelter in Makaha. Uh, no, okay, we, we, we can probably defer that as well to our Housing and Homelessness Committee with Chair Crab, if that's okay. Um, Chair Crab? For Housing and Homelessness, um, for the permitting? Or you guys could do a joint. I don't know, planning permitting, or you can have it on your own. Um, but it'll be different. Yes, go ahead.
No, um, we can defer it, but yeah, we can do joint if necessary to.
Um, I think there definitely needs to be discussions on these particular items and have the necessary people present, like our permitting departments or what's currently in place right now in the pending projects. Um, ten point seven, go ahead.
No, I just said can do, can do.
Okay, mahalo. Uh, ten point seven, Tiana Awards Board Member for Service. Um, so the request was for us to recognize community members for service and we did that in Community Concerns. So mahalo. Um, and then Agenda Item eleven, Announcements. So eleven point one, the YNI Coast Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-four is tentatively scheduled to hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, December fifth. Um, I am currently gonna defer that as we already took a vote in July that we are recessed in December, being the other community meeting that we would like to take part in. Um, so we will reconvene in January, the first Tuesday of January. Um, moving right along and it'll be here, YNI District Park Multipurpose Room and online via WebEx. So eleven point two, the annual YNI Coast Community Christmas Parade is scheduled and Ho'olaulea is scheduled this year for Saturday, December ninth, beginning at ten A M. From the YNI Boat Harbor, ending at YNI Mall. Um, also, side note, board members, if we would like to participate, if we can have a discussion or just be present if you want to be there to represent the neighborhood board like we did last, last year. I don't know, actually. We need to take that to a vote. So can they not be done? Okay, okay. I think we discussed it last year. That's why we agreed that we were gonna participate. So I was just, okay. Um, and I think it was successful. We brought books and gave to the children and engaged with the community. So I think that was great. Um, I think if we could have some kind of activity, I will talk to NCO more about that. Um, so eleven point three, Rebroadcast of YNI Coast Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-four Meetings are scheduled on Olelo Channel forty-nine for every third Monday at nine P M. And every fourth Saturday at twelve P M. each month. An archive of past meetings may be found on H T T P S, um, semicolon, backslash, backslash, olelo dot org, backslash, olelo net, backslash, by searching. Um, eleven point four, Find a Monthly Archive of Handouts and Reference Materials Concerning to the YNI Coast Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-four at H T T P S, semicolon, backslash, backslash, drive dot google dot com, backslash, drive, backslash, folders, backslash, one five J R. And it's capital J and R. And if not, just go to our NCO website. Um, Honolulu dot And it's capital J and R. And if not, just go to our NCO website, um, honolulu.gov slash NCO. Um, or you can call them at eight zero eight seven six eight three seven zero zero? One zero. Thank you for that. Um, but I appreciate all of you attending and uh, there was one more thing. Everybody that watches online, we appreciate you guys. Um, continue to stay collaboratively engaged in our community discussions. We appreciate you all and we wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll see you in the new year. Um, but God bless you. Thank you. We appreciate you. We are adjourning this meeting at nine twenty-two.
Hey, Kalkohu, uh, if you ever announce another football game, if you ever